One minute to air, the livestream has started. Thirty seconds.
Good evening. Welcome to the Durham Planning Commission. The members of the Durham Planning Commission have been appointed by the City Council and County Board of Commissioners to make recommendations to elected officials. You should know that elected officials have the final say on any issue before us tonight. While this meeting is being conducted in person, it is also accessible using the Zoom virtual meeting platform. In the virtual meeting platform, public participants do not have the ability to talk or be seen by video by default. To maintain meeting decorum and a discernible record of the meeting, the chat function has been disabled. For those attending in person, if you plan to speak on an agenda item tonight, please go to the table to my left to sign up to speak for an agenda item. When speaking, please state your name and your address clearly when you come to the podium. Please speak directly into the microphone. If you are attending the meeting virtually, you will be given the ability to speak at the appropriate time. If you have pre-registered, your name will be called for you to make your comments, just like an in-person public hearing. You may also call in during the meeting tonight by dialing 1-301-715-8592. If you call in during the meeting, you will need to wait until the particular public hearing you are interested in starts. After all of the pre-registered speakers have shared their comments, I will ask if there is anyone else wishing to speak. At that point, you will need to digitally raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone. And when recognized, state your name and address before making your comments. Time may be limited for speakers depending upon the length of the agenda. Finally, all motions are stated in the affirmative, so if a motion fails or ties, the recommendation is for denial. Thank you. May we have the roll call?
Good evening, everyone. Grace Smith with the Planning Department. Chair Cameron.
Here.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Shigares.
Here.
Commissioner Cutright.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner McIver.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Valentine.
Here.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Sees.
Here.
Commissioner Carmen Williams. Commissioner Zuri Williams.
Here.
Chair Cameron, I know that we had two requests for excused absences this evening. I'm not sure if Carmen Williams might be running late, so we could wait and see.
Hold off on that.
Mm-hmm. So we had a request to excuse Commissioner Amendolia and Commissioner Herod.
Do we want to hold off on all the excuses or just do it now?
I'm fine.
We can vote for them.
Do it later.
Okay, well.
Do one, that would be fine.
Well, we know the needed excused absences, so why don't we just vote on those?
I'm fine with that. Well, we can hold, just do it all at once if we need to.
Okay.
Well, actually, no, we need to go ahead and do it because we don't have, I don't have any record for.
Commissioner Williams.
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't have anything for that.
Okay. Can I get someone moved to approve the excused absences for the two?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May I have the roll call vote?
So it was moved by Morgan. I missed the second. I apologize.
Cutright.
Commissioner, excuse me, Chair Cameron?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Shigares?
Yes.
Commissioner Cutright?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner McIver?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sees?
Yes.
Commissioner Valentine?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuri Williams?
Yes.
We apologize for the heat in the room. We have asked for it to be adjusted or cooled off. That's why the doors are open. We are very sorry. We walked into this this afternoon, so we're.
All right, no problem. So let's approve the minutes from the last meeting, approval of the minutes in the consistency statements from the October 11th, 2022 commission meeting. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Morgan and seconded by Commissioner Sees. Huh?
Do a show of hands.
Oh, show of hands for approval?
Thank you.
Oh, me too. Okay, thank you. Y'all, this is my first time tonight, so excuse me. All right, so just very quickly, we want to adjust the agenda a little bit. There is an informational item on the text amendments, a report, just a report out. We want to move that up. What number was that? It was under new business, right? We want to move that up before the public hearing. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda?
Staff is not aware of any.
All right. Can we get a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by, see now I've got everybody's name, Commissioner Baker, and seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Just need a show of hands for approval?
Okay.
All right, motion carries. Before we get into the public hearing, we do have a retreat on Thursday at noon in the, what room is it in?
We will have the retreat in the Planning Department, in what we call the Urban Design Studio, which is just a meeting space inside the Planning Department on the grand floor of this building at 12 o'clock. And for those of you that have responded, look forward to seeing you. If someone, if someone that can't come, if your plans change, come anyway. We would love to have you, but yeah.
All right, thank you.
And we need to state for the record that all of the public notices have been carried out and executed in compliance with UDO and state law, and those records are on file under the Planning Department.
All right, thank you. If there is nothing else, we'll move into the public hearings.
Oh, you want to do the committee report first, is that right?
Oh, yeah, me, right? That was me, too.
That's you, too. I know, you've had an exciting afternoon just in the last hour, right? Okay.
And y'all, it is my birthday, just so y'all know, too.
I know, right? I didn't want to give that up, but I wanted to say.
Yeah. So just a quick report out on the new business item. It's just for information, the private text amendment to simplify codes for affordable development committee report. The committee did meet last month, and we made some recommendations. We also just received additional others, other city staff from different departments. We just received their comments. So the committee is going to meet again before we make our final recommendations to the rest of the Planning Commission. So that's just that informational report very briefly.
Great, and we just wanted to remind everyone in attendance that that item is coming back to your regular meeting in December for public hearing. It'll have to be acted on that evening because that's the end of the 90-day continuance. And once the committee sets the meeting and Chair Cameron is the head of that committee, we will put that out in the weekly newsletter and on the meeting calendar for the city and county.
Thank you. All right, moving into public hearings, comprehensive plan, future land use map amendments. Is there a staff report? Wait, I'm sorry. So we are doing item five, right? Or are we going directly, so we're not doing any of those public hearings? I'm sorry, we're not going into the, so I'm looking at public hearings, comprehensive plan, future land use map amendments, those first two things? Or are we going right into the zoning map changes?
It would be the zoning map.
Okay, so we have to recuse Commissioner from this.
Yes, Vice Chair Cameron, I'll need to recuse myself from the first two cases, Z22-03 and Z22-08 due to a conflict of interest.
Do we have a second for, I mean, a person?
We have to vote on that.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Who made the motion?
Oh, we got to move to recuse.
I saw a move to recuse.
Okay, so Cutright made the motion, and who's going to second?
Seconded.
Morgan.
Thank you very much.
May we have a roll call vote, please?
We can do a show of hands.
Show of hands.
For everyone.
Okay.
Except for Mr. McIver.
Show of hands.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Okay, let's proceed.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission and those in attendance. Damiere Powell with the Planning Department. Our first case is Z2203 Crescent Drive Assemblage for a Proposed Zoning Map Change. It is associated with an annexation petition, BDG 2203, to request an annexation into city limits. The proposal is located towards the intersection of Crescent Drive and Wendell Road. The site is currently in the county, and a concurrent application, as I mentioned before, is associated with this proposal to annex the entire site into city limits. It is located within the Lee Village Compact Neighborhood Development Tier. The proposal includes six parcels, which total 5.37 acres that are currently zoned residential suburban 20. The proposed zoning is residential compact with a development plan to facilitate the construction of a maximum 107 multifamily units. The existing future land use map designation is Design District, and the proposal is consistent with this designation. The site is located within the major transportation corridor, Interstate Highway 40 zoning overlay. The existing zoning, as I mentioned, is residential suburban 20. The zoning of surrounding properties adjacent to the site include residential, residential suburban 20, residential compact, office and institutional, and mixed use. The aerial map shows the general location of the project. There are vast mix of other uses in proximity to the site, including multifamily, parks, schools, and retail within three miles of the site. The site is also within a mile of a transit stop. The applicant has included graphic and text commitments. They include a timing commitment for the construction of Wendell Road from Crescent Drive to the northern property line prior to the 91st Certificate of Occupancy, aligning Crescent Drive with Rutgers Place, providing a 10-foot shared path along Crescent Drive, providing an accessible ramp on the east side of Crescent Drive, limiting the building height to 60 feet, providing streetscape amenities along Crescent Drive, that includes seating and waste receptacles. And the applicant proposes the following features on site: 107 multifamily units with a maximum building height of 60 feet. For site circulation, the site would have three access points, two located off Wendell Road, and the third aligning across from Rutgers Place. A continuous sidewalk will be provided along Crescent Drive to accommodate the multi-use path for the comprehensive plan. Crescent Drive roadway improvements are to be completed per approved site plan D2000287. A crosswalk connection shall be provided across Crescent Drive at the future Wendell Road intersection. And lastly, the proposal commits to a maximum proposed 70% impervious surface and the minimum required open space amount of 5% of the site area, and a 30-foot project boundary buffer is required and shown on the development plan. The applicant held a neighborhood meeting on December 27th, and five social pinpoint comments were provided. Staff determines that this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted ordinances and policies. Furthermore, the zoning map change would allow for the increase of housing supply in Durham with 107 multifamily units. The proposed density and number of units of this site are in a location in proximity to similar multifamily uses, as well as, as well as a mix of other uses that may serve residents, such as parks, schools, and retail within three miles of the site. The site is also within a mile of a transit stop that residents may use to access, to access other areas of Durham. And staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions.
All right, I will now open the public hearing. And so just as a reminder, each person has two minutes to speak. When I call your name, please come forward to the microphone and state your name and your address. Now I know what Commissioner Terry Noras, Noranso, can't read that writing, so excuse me.
Good evening, Vice Chair Cameron, members of the Commission. My name is Terry Noranho. I'm with Stewart. I live at 504 Princeton Street in Raleigh. I'm here representing our client, Park Grove Realty. Andy Bedoiz is the owner, is here. Also here from Stewart, Tim Somerville with our civil engineering group. As mentioned in the staff report, we are seeking a rezoning to a residential compact zoning designation, as well as the voluntary annexation. We agree that this proposal is consistent with the designated future land use and is compatible with the adjacent existing and future land uses. This proposal aligns with the district intent by promoting well-integrated new residential with a mix of housing types at higher density. This project contributes to the intent to increase mobility options, including pedestrian circulation and bikeway amenities, by committing to provide the 10-foot multi-use path that integrates with and connects and provides connectivity to adjacent existing and proposed projects in the area. Overall, this project, we feel, offers a more diverse housing option, opening up availability for people who like to rent or need to rent, and also for ownership. We feel that this is compatible with long-term planning goals for this area. And with that, the team and I are happy to answer any questions. We respectfully ask for your recommendation for approval. Thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Chair, I had a question. I wanted to just clarify, how much time are we doing the normal 10 for the applicant? And then you're going to, are you going to do per speaker amount of time so I can time for you?
Sure.
Is it?
Yeah.
What, what amount was it?
10 for the applicant.
And two per speaker?
Two for, yeah, each speaker.
Okay. Wanted to make sure.
So did I skip the applicant or something? Next, we have Mr. Tim Somerville? None? Okay. Mr. Andrew Butcoris?
Boteras.
Okay. And then the last person, I absolutely cannot read that name whatsoever, begins with an S. That person here? Can you read that? No. So no one else, it's a proponent, no one else wants to speak on this? Can't read that last name? Okay. All right, so. No, nobody's on the phone that I can see? Correct? Nobody's on the webinar?
I think John Eady is a proponent.
Proponent? Okay, I can't see that person on the, but we can get them dialed in. There, okay. We have Mr. John Eady that wants to speak. Please state your name and your address. You have two minutes.
Hi, Commissioners, my name is John Eady. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. I live at 5708 Crescent Drive. I am president of the Woodland Acres Homeowners Association, which consists of the residents and property owners along Crescent Drive and Wendell Road. My home is on some of the property covered in the current rezoning application. I just wanted to ask the Commissioners to consider in their deliberations the impact that the designation of compact design has had on the residents of this area, both financially and personally. Our homeowners association has supported both the Durham Orange Light Rail Transit and the compact design designation for our area, and we have worked with both GO Triangle and Durham Planning to bring that vision to fruition. We believe it is the best use for this centrally located land. Unfortunately, the demise of the Light Rail Transit project has left us living in a financial limbo. Under the current RS20 zoning, no one desiring to purchase a single-family dwelling wants to buy a house in an area designated on the future land use map as a high-density development. So that market has pretty much been closed to us. Our only hope for getting any equity out of our homes is now left to potential developers. So we are constrained to live here, surrounded by construction and new multi-story apartments, until Durham grants the rezoning necessary to give us the opportunity to market our properties. On a more personal level, living here has changed for us from a very peaceful to a very stressful environment. We lived for two years, from 2015 to 2017, with the construction of the Blue on Farrington Apartments just across the street from my house. And since 2021, we have been living again with the noise of backup beepers, grading equipment, hammers, and nail guns from the construction of the Farrington Road multi-use apartment adjacent to the northbound.
Mr. Eady?
Yes, ma'am.
Your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you. Do we have any other? I thought I saw Mimi Kessler's hand. Yes, I do.
Good eating. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
My name's Mimi Kessler. I live at 1418 Woodland Drive in Durham, and I used to commute on Farrington Road right, right past where this development is being proposed. And I'm not sure if the Commissioners are, you know, fully aware that, that they had already agreed to a large apartment complex on Farrington Road, and that's what the clearing that Mr. Eady was talking about. And my concern has to do with the traffic of, it's the additive number of people who will be living in this very small area and served primarily by Farrington Road. So I just wanted to remind the Commissioners of that. And it isn't that I necessarily oppose this development, but I'm not sure it's good for the environment to be building these things so close to each other. I also would like to know what they have done to coordinate with the people who are developing the other development to see if some of the amenities that they talked about would go with the amenities that were discussed for that other development. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Robert Fife next.
Yeah, I'm the vice president of the management company that manages Blue on Farrington, and I'm not so much opposed to the development, but I do have a couple concerns. And the one concern is, is the traffic in the area. I noticed there's not a traffic study that's required for this rezoning. And also the stormwater runoff or what they're projecting to, or proposing to do with the stormwater. We've experienced a lot of traffic problems with the new property that's going up right next door to us. I encourage the development, but what's, we've been getting flooded out due to that development, and I'm concerned about this development going in and the stormwater running off that keeps coming onto our property because we're kind of at the lower end of it. And I'm also concerned about the traffic. Getting out of our property, getting out of Crescent, they currently have it blacked off right now, but I think those two issues need to be addressed in this proposal.
Sir, can you state your name and your address, please?
Robert Fife for Blue on Farrington Apartments. And the address is 5840 Farrington Road, Chapel Hill, 27517.
Thank you. Do we have any else, one else wishing to speak? Do applicant want to come up and address the questions or concerns from? One more? Oh, one more? Sorry. Hold on. Elizabeth Brown?
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, yeah, I'm Elizabeth Brown. I'm at 5420 Wendell Road. Um, I just, you know, I know development is going to happen here. We're pretty accepting of that, but I would really like to see it get done in a way that keeps it walkable and sustainable. I'm really worried that the way that plans are now, it's going to be a very car-centric development. My main concern is that this level of density was really planned for this area having a light rail stop, and I know as, that's not going to happen. You know, there really needs to be another public transit option to handle just like the amount of people who are going to live here. So I really would love to see this apartment get built in a way that doesn't need to have a parking lot for, you know, 100 cars, you know, assuming one car per unit. I think there's a lot of value into using the land in a different way, you know, preserving some of the tree cover to keep it walkable, to keep it actually safe to be a pedestrian. You know, tree cover is really important for keeping down car speed so people can get around. Yeah, I have, you know, traffic concerns and all of that, but I would really like for this to be a place that people could live without cars. And I don't know that that's going to be possible without some improvements to the bus infrastructure. And I know that's not necessarily like the responsibility of the developer or that they're, you know, they're not necessarily the person who's in charge of getting, you know, the bus shelters improved or getting bus routes added, but I think the Commission should think about not allowing, you know, development in a place that doesn't have the resources to support that many people at this point. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. All right. Making sure there's no one else with their hand raised online. All right.
Good evening, I'm Tim Somerville with Stewart, civil engineer located at 101 West Main Street. I'm just here to try and address some of the concerns were brought up. Hopefully I can, got them all jotted down here. With regards to traffic, the proposed number of units in this development did not meet the city's threshold or the DOT's threshold to require a TIA. So, you know, the city has done studies to know how, you know, what requires a TIA. So, you know, they're assuming that the, the existing traffic infrastructure can handle the development. With regards to stormwater, we will be required to meet the city of Durham's stormwater ordinance for both water quality and detention. We are proposing to detain up to the 100-year storm, so there would not be any impacts from any storm below 100-year storm on downstream properties. And we are coordinating with the development, adjacent development, with their stormwater engineers to have the two projects work together. Then as far as a walkable community, we are proposing a 10-foot path along Crescent Drive. This path will connect to the other 10-foot multi-use paths in this area to provide a walkable community throughout. walkable community throughout this, you know, quote-unquote neighborhood. You know, there's multiple developments that are being built, proposed, and existing all have this path that will connect and provide that walkability.
Thank you.
Can I ask Mr. Somerville a question?
Wait just a second. Are there any other speakers? None? One? No, you just let them in. Okay. All right. So now is the time for commissioner comments and questions.
Apologize for that. Mr. Somerville?
Talk into your mic.
Mr. Somerville, could you address the question around the coordination with the other development around some of the amenities? One of the citizens mentioned that in their commentary around the coordination with the other development in the area?
I was referring to the stormwater, but was there a question about coordination with? I'm sorry, I missed that one then.
Yes, there was a question that was raised about whether or not developers in this project had got any coordination with the other development in that area that's going on around particular amenities?
Not around amenities, just in regards to stormwater and infrastructure, but we are working, we will be tying our 10-foot multi-use path into their 10-foot multi-use path to create a continuous stretch, but no, there is no coordination between the two as far as amenities go.
And can you just share with us briefly, like you had mentioned that there's no requirement for a traffic study, but have you done your own analysis on the impact with regards to the traffic?
No, we have not, no.
My final question is around the stormwater runoff. And so you had made reference to the 100-year. As you know, the storms in our nation are increasing exponentially. And so with respect to that 100-year requirement, have you done an analysis looking at whether or not the storms will be increasing relative to that 100-year period in a more accelerated pace?
Right now, the City of Durham's ordinance requires detention up to the 10-year storm. They are realizing that, which is exactly what you say, storms are increasing in intensity as more impervious goes, climate change. So that's why we are proposing to go above and beyond what the City of Durham requires with detaining up to the 100-year storm.
Thank you.
Mr. Somerville, just following up on that point regarding the 100-year versus the 10-year requirement, it's, I may have missed it if it's there, but in the past, we've often had applicants make such a text commitment to treating the 100-year in terms of quantity detention. Does that appear in the documents or is that a text commitment?
It is currently not a text commitment, no, but it's something we would consider and we're.
So right now, there's nothing other than the statement that you're planning to attempt to?
As of now, yes.
Okay.
We can consider it, yeah.
I would say that in the past, a lot of projects have made that commitment.
We can, we can make that commitment.
Can you work with staff to develop the text accordingly?
I just wanted to clarify if you are going to try and commit it now for the record?
Yeah, we will. Okay. And yes, feel free to reach out to us and we can coordinate that.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments or questions?
I have a question. This may be for staff or Mr. Somerville. I see on, well, page 19 that we were given, there are numerous trees. It looks like 20 oak, 18 oak, 22 oak, 32 oak. I'm assuming that these are considered major specimen trees. This is in the suburban tier, correct? Current zoning is in the suburban tier?
It is in the Lee Village Compact Neighborhood Tier.
Okay, so it's not in the suburban or the urban tier?
No, ma'am.
So the tree, major specimen tree regulation does not apply here?
That's correct.
Okay. I was just wondering, since there were so many of them listed, but that would certainly help with some of the stormwater runoff. Is there any plans from the developer to do any kind of green area or something? Because it looks like a lot of these will be gone if this?
We are limiting the impervious surface to 70%. There is no requirement to save trees, but, you know, trying to be good stewards, we'll do everything we can to try and save them, but we are limiting the impervious surface to 70%.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Baker, you have a question?
Yeah, I thought the comments that were made by Speaker Elizabeth Brown were pretty interesting, and it made me do a little bit of thinking and looking at the proposal here. One question I have, since staff is up the microphone, just real quick. I noticed that, looking at some of the commitments, there was a commitment for each street frontage facade will have one entrance with direct access to the street. Is that not already a requirement in the design, this design district?
No.
Okay. And then sidewalks shall have a minimum of five-foot clear zone. I guess my point here is, I think we need to take a look at the design requirements because if this is intended to be a high-density mixed-use walkable area, we got to get some of the basics right here. So hopefully, that's something that we can work on is improving some of the design standards there because that's sort of having that one entrance is a very, very low, very low bar. Real quick for the applicant, I was just going to ask, and I appreciate the questions about the 100-year storm controls. Are there any green building elements that are going to be proposed as part of this project? Anything, maybe not LEED, but LEED equivalent or in the realm of LEED?
Good evening. Andy Bodois with Park Grove Realty. We're not doing LEED or necessarily LEED equivalent, but we do try to take into account a energy-efficient design as much as possible, and we try to use Energy Star appliances and things like that. And ultimately, more likely than not, when we do our permanent financing, we'll be working through a program that will require some level of green attainability, and that's typically how we do it. It's typically, we do a mortgage program. It's a HUD-insured mortgage, and it requires some level of green, but we don't have any LEED standards or anything like that we're necessarily following. We do try to be very conscious as we build and that we're doing something that's very energy-efficient.
Okay, noted. And then are there any affordable housing units that are going to be included in the development?
There are no, there are no affordable housing units in the building or in the project. I know there are some that are being built now adjacent to it, and the site is just, quite frankly, not large enough to have two separate projects, and that's really what it requires to be able to provide affordable. The financing mechanism for the affordable is one program, and the market rate is a different program. And unfortunately, in North Carolina, you really can't mix. This is a market rate project, and we don't have the ability to provide affordable in this project as well.
Okay. We've been getting developers doing market rate projects that incorporate 5%, 10% units affordable, so. Without additional, you know, kinds of financing.
Yeah, that's not something that we can do here.
Okay. Yeah, you don't want to do that. Okay. So just kind of coming back to the comments by Elizabeth Brown, you know, kind of low on the green building elements, low on the affordable housing units. And then in terms of kind of like walkability, what makes something walkable is the density diversity in design, the three Ds. And we've got grocery stores that are the closest grocery store, you know, almost three miles away, retail commercial over three miles away, you know, closest transit stop is a mile away. None of this is really within a walkable distance. So those are, those are all concerns to me. I, I think that, you know, multifamily makes a lot of sense here. We've been pretty regularly, you know, recommending approval for upzoning in this area, but it is concerning that everything is housing, and there isn't actually anything to walk to. So it's kind of like we're just creating density without actually creating any walkability, which is definitely a concern, and I share that with some of the community members that spoke. So that's all for me.
Thank you. Mr. Cutright?
Do we have a split for apartments and townhomes? What the count is?
So it's 15 townhomes, and then the balance is apartments?
And have you considered, while you're not going to do affordable, have you considered a contribution? To the Affordable Housing Fund, to be clear.
I guess I don't, is there some, I'm not aware of any kind of program in that regard. I don't know. So no, that isn't something that we're considering because nobody's really raised that thus far. I will say that, you know, this is a site that we're doing everything we can to make it, you know, to try, to tie the trail in, to make improvements. We've gone above and beyond. I think, I don't remember the exact page, but if you look at the staff report, I think it's maybe page nine. It refers to all the things we're doing beyond the UDO. And it is very compatible with the adjacent uses. Obviously, there's apartments being built now adjacent to the site. There's an existing apartment. One of the people on the call was affiliated with one of the apartment projects. I understand why he would prefer to have, not have competition and be able to charge at rates that he doesn't have competition, but, you know, we're trying to do something very nice here that fits into the community and fits into the vision of Durham and the plan and the land use plan. So we think this is a very compatible, and the staff clearly thinks that based on their report. So we, we think it's a great project. I wasn't aware of any affordable program. We are certainly can consider that at the appropriate time if that's something that is important, but we're doing the best we can to meet the UDO and go above and beyond.
I think I could speak for a lot of folks and say we appreciate you going above and beyond. I think the sheer fact that you're looking at a rezoning is warrants, you know, sort of some additional efforts, right, to change what's currently in place, and so that's appreciated. For clarity, the Affordable Housing Fund is simply a fund that allows you as a developer to contribute dollars in whatever amount you deem meaningful to the Affordable Housing Fund of Durham in lieu of, you know, providing affordable units should you be so compelled. It's often looked upon favorably in rezoning cases.
Staff, just have a quick follow-up. Sir, you had mentioned that you all would be committing to 15 townhomes?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Okay. This isn't currently on the development plan. We just wanted to make sure, see if you wanted to add this to the development plan, and we'll coordinate with you.
You're saying that the townhomes aren't necess, I think they're shown on the site plan that it was submitted, but I don't know what, when you say that they're not on the development plan, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Yeah, in our list of text commitments, we have the number of units, but not the type of units, but we can follow up with you just to make sure.
Okay. Yeah, no, great. I would think we want to offer that as a, to create a mix of uses, and so that is part of the project.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Are there any other? Yes, Commissioner Cease?
Thank you. I just want to follow up on that last point in the conversation that we heard. I think what staff may be requesting and what you may be describing may be generally the same, and I just want to make sure they're the same. So you have a site plan that's submitted, but that's not part of our considerations in terms of the rezoning. And I think what staff is seeking is clarification as to whether you're willing to make that a commitment, and the significance of that, I think, is the degree to which actually incorporating a mix of housing exactly as you're describing, even if it's only 15 units, is something that has been viewed favorably. And so if that is a commitment, I think that would, that would be a good. That's what I wanted to clarify.
Sure. No, thank you for the point. And yes, I'm happy to make that as a commitment if that's what you're asking. Yes.
Thank you. And then just one more general comment, not for the applicant, but following up on Commissioner Baker's comments and one of the speakers that spoke from the public earlier regarding kind of the remnants that we're all facing. We heard it certainly in the description from the staff report, we hear it from the applicant, we heard it very powerfully, I think, from one of the property owners who's been living with the fact that the light rail isn't something that is going to happen, yet we have a zoning mechanism and land use mechanism in place that anticipated that, and that's kind of constrained them and added certain pressures. And I think what's notable about that is here you have a fairly small parcel that you are proposing something that's compatible with the intent as expressed in the definition of that district, but really what's lacking is the clarity within, within that compact neighborhood tier and the ordinance language to kind of catch up. And I'll add to that, that catching up is very much an active process through the Engaged Durham process and the comprehensive plan work that's being done by staff right now. But I just wanted to kind of add that context really for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time and ask for a motion on this case.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we take case Z22, quadruple zero three, the Crescent Street assemblage to be forwarded to the City Council with a favorable recommendation.
Second?
It's been moved by Commissioner Morgan and seconded by Commissioner Baker. May we have the roll call, please?
Hey, Chair Cameron?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Chigeras?
Yes.
Commissioner Cutright?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Cease?
Yes.
Commissioner Valentine?
Yes.
And Commissioner Zuri Williams?
Yes.
It passes eight to one.
Thank you.
Yes, and I just wanted to correct for the record earlier, Chair. I did have an email from Commissioner Williams, Carmen Williams, but it was a few weeks ago, and I thought it was in reference to the retreat, but it was actually in reference to tonight, and she's supposed to be arriving late, but she's coming.
She texted me.
Right, thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right, now we have case Z220008, 2201 West Cornwallis. I'm sorry, yes?
Yeah, I need to.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Before we go there, we need to recuse Commissioner Cease.
Yes, thank you. I just want to clarify that I don't have a financial interest in the project per the description of the rules and procedure for our commission, but I do, through my consulting firm, have a contractual relationship with the applicant on a project in another adjacent municipality, and so for that perceived potential conflict of interest, would like to request recusal.
All right.
I saw a move.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Cutright and seconded by Commissioner Valentine. Show of hands.
Thank you.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Demire Powell, Planning Department. Falling case is Z2208, 2201 West Cornwallis for a proposed zoning map change. The proposal is located at 2201 West Cornwallis Road. The site is located within the suburban development tier and is within city limits. The proposal includes six parcels, which total 7.487 acres, that are currently zoned residential suburban 20 and commercial general. The proposed zoning is planned development residential 13.024 to facilitate the construction of up to 90 apartment units. The existing future land use map designation is commercial and open space. If the proposal is approved, staff recommend a change to the future land use map designation to medium-high-density residential and recreation and open space. The existing zoning is residential suburban 20 The existing zoning is residential suburban 20 and commercial general. The applicant is proposing to rezone to Plan Development Residential 13.024. And the aerial map here shows the general location of the project and surrounding development. The applicant has included graphic and text commitments. They include a maximum 60-foot building height, up to 90 apartment units. Minimum 65% of those units will be one-bedroom or studio units. They also specify the plant species used in vehicular use and buffer areas and limit plantings to those specified in the Durham Landscape Manual. They also provide an enhanced buffer area adjacent to parcel ID 137099. And prior to the certificate of occupancy, they propose to provide a new Greenway Trail connection and approve design our typical section for the 10-foot shared facility Greenway Trail as a part of their site plan supplemental. Also, prior to the first building permit issuance, they propose a new 20-foot, 25-foot Greenway Trail easement connecting Cornwallis Road to the existing 50-foot Greenway easement along West, along the Western Property Line. And prior to the certificate of occupancy, Cornwallis Road improvements, including a westbound left turn lane and an ingress and egress lane, and a minimum five foot of additional asphalt for a bicycle lane, as well as an accessible pedestrian route internal to the site and a five-foot sidewalk along the Northern Property Line. And lastly, they propose apartment units shall be accessed via, accessed via a central corridor with no exterior stairwells as a primary entrance, and that the development will be concentrated on the northern portion of the site to protect the environmentally sensitive portion of the site to the south. The applicant proposes the following features on site, the 90 apartment units. And for site circulation, the site would have one access point on West Cornwallis Road. There is an existing easement for the City of Durham Greenway along the Western Property Line. The proposal commits to a maximum impervious surface of 29%. It meets the 20% tree preservation requirement and the 18% open space requirement. There are several environmental considerations on site, including two streams and a floodway. The applicant has identified the stream buffer and floodplain on the development plan. The proposal also limits the building height to 48 feet in the blue building envelope in the northwest portion of the site. And the State Historic Preservation Office has identified the Granville Circle log cabin as a historic building located on site. The development plan notes that this may be removed or altered with the development of the site. The applicant has held a neighborhood meeting on February 8th, 2022, and an additional neighborhood meeting was held on October 25th, 2022. 39 social pinpoint comments and 43 social pinpoint survey responses were provided. Staff determines that this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted ordinances and policies. The proposal would increase the housing supply by 90 units. The site is in proximity, is in proximity to similar zoning, but there is concern expressed by Durham residents that the proposed density is too high for the site. The proposed bicycle lane, greenway, and trail connections would enhance connectivity in the area. However, there are environmental considerations on site, including a 100-year floodplain and two streams. At least one stormwater control measure at the site plan stage will likely be required on site to further mitigate flooding concerns. And lastly, there has been substantial public comment on this case and social pinpoint with concerns including traffic, incompatibility of density and building height, flooding, and environmental impacts in the existing floodplain. And staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions.
Thank you. So from my understanding, before we open the public hearing portion, is that we have a lot of proponents signed up for this particular case, and they would like to combine all of their time. This is that case, right? I'm looking at staff, yes, all right. So what we're going to do is we'll have the applicant speak and then the, the community, and we'll just give each side 10 minutes each for that purpose. So at this current time, I'll open up the public hearing and ask the applicant, right, to come forward with a presentation.
Good evening again. Chair Cameron, members of the Commission. I'm Terry Noronho with Stewart, 101 West Main. I'm here representing our client EB Capital. Ernie Brown is here. Also here from Stewart, as you met Tim Somerville, Director of Engineering, and also the Traffic Engineering Lead from Rami Kemp, Joshua Ranky. We're all available to answer questions when I get to that point. For this site, we are looking to obtain a PDR zoning with a density of 13.04, OT4. Although the current future land use map identifies this site as commercial general, we agree with the staff recommendation that this site is in line with the recommended change to medium-high density residential with the range from eight to 20 dwelling units per acre. But at 13 dwelling units per acre as proposed, this project fits more within the medium density range. We feel that the design flexibility of the PDR zoning, the encouragement of the efficient use of land, high-quality design, which allows for innovative development integrated with the proposed adjacent uses and compatible with existing land, patterns of nearby development, aligns well with the intent of this project. That integration into the existing and proposed development is being achieved particularly in the realm of landscape buffers, preservation and protection of the existing landscape and floodplain. It's also being achieved with regard to connectivity and mobility as outlined in the Durham Trails and Greenways Master Plan and the Durham Comprehensive Bicycle Transportation Master Plan. Alexandra, if you could pull up that graphic. Kind of at a distance here, but. So on the left is the New Hope Greenway, as shown on the Durham Trails and Greenways Master Plan. To the right is an enlargement of that graphic. The red parcel is our project site. So along the west side of the project is the Future Sandy Creek Trail. To the project north, along the roadway portion of our site is the Planned Street Trail, which would provide connection under the 15501 interchange to the east of our project site. Currently, along our project's western edge, is an existing platted 50-foot Greenway easement. Along the northwest portion of our property, that, it's only a 25-foot easement that exists. So this project contributes 25 additional feet of Greenway easement, bringing the total width to 55 feet, essentially bridging the gap between the 50-foot easement and Cornwallis Road. And then we in fact have committed to build a portion of that Greenway. You can, Alexandra, you can take the graph down. Thank you. Overall, this project will offer a more diverse housing option, opening up availability for residents seeking residential options. There is currently a shortage of this housing type in the area. In addition, this project contributes to mobility options through the provision of additional Greenway easement, bike lanes, and extending sidewalk infrastructure along West Cornwallis. With that, the team and I are happy to answer any questions. We respectfully ask for your recommendation of approval. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Do we have a representative for the opponent? Remember to please state your name and your address.
My name is Richard Rumball, at 211 Mayway Drive in Durham. I'm told, we have a short PowerPoint, and I've been told that we can show that. Is that possible?
Staff would like to clarify, are we putting 10 minutes on for?
Yes.
10 minutes for all of us, is that correct? Well, I'll start.
Yeah, your seconds are ticking, so.
My seconds are ticking. We're here to represent the Homeowners Association of Canterbury Neighborhood and the large majority of our membership, 58 homes, ask us to oppose this presentation. We stress that we are keen on development, and we understand the need to develop housing in Durham, and we respect that desire. However, we do think there are certain hazards associated with the construction of this project that will render it unsatisfactory, and that's, and we're going to point that out. You can put the first slide up, the next slide up. Will help me remember the slides if you put them up there.
I think there's maybe a little bit of a delay.
It is Zoom. Well, so we think that adding 90 units and the associated parking that goes with that is in a very difficult position on the highway. Thank you. It's in a very difficult position on Cornwallis Road, and the neighborhood would be extremely close to the regulated intersection of exit 106 from 15501. A busy highway in which cars travel at much greater than the posted speed of 35 all the time. We think that there is, we haven't seen highway plans, but we think that the left turn lane into the project, into the development, would be really short and difficult to access as turning off of 15501. Having increased traffic, including a turning lane and additional traffic on the side, on the through lanes, will produce a greater risk of accidents. Cornwallis Road is the primary route of access for Station 11 emergency vehicles, and they come down that street with lights and siren about 120 to 150 times per month. School buses traverse that street routinely, and we have eight different bus, four different bus routes with two runs per day to and from, so that's eight bus trips up and down Cornwallis. Go on to the next slide if you would. Actually, you can skip ahead to the. Well, that one's good, let's stick with that. So we're standing there. The photographer is in the position of where the ingress and egress road to the development would be. The lights that you see to the upper right are the regulatory lights at the intersection of exit 106 from 15501 onto Eastern West Cornwallis. So it gets, the traffic is rather dense in that area. Next slide. This reinforces what I said earlier about the emergency vehicles. In excess of 120 trips per month, they come through there all the time. And it is the only way for the fire trucks to get into the City of Durham. Next slide. Yeah, we haven't seen any highway design plans, but from our estimation, the left turn into the, into the development will be very short. The bike lane would be about 45 feet, and there would still be, have to be some widening of the road to accommodate the through traffic. You can go to the next slide. I mentioned earlier about the number of buses that travel up and down. We've had a number of close calls with children on the busy highway already. So let's go on to the next slide about bikes. And so it's pretty dense. You could see on an average day, people are trying to jog up the side of the road. Traffic is coming down the middle of the road to avoid the joggers. And so we think that increasing the traffic onto and off of Cornwallis Road in this area would be problematic at best. Next slide is about bikes. E-bikes are popular and are being recommended for transit in various places. They are prohibited, however, on the Duke Forest through Greenways and many other Greenways in proximity to the development. There's not an easy route to a bike, a bike lane from the development, and it's a mile, 1.2 miles to the nearest public transit. Okay.
Hi, I'm Thomas Spillington. I live at 1233 Birch Park Road in Durham. Next slide, please. So we're concerned as a community about parking. You know, the developers been non-committal on the number of spaces for 90 units at our last meeting in October. They did reveal their account would be about one for each unit plus 15, which comes to 105. And Durham baseline requirements is two per unit plus disability, which would come to 184, which is much greater than the 105 proposed. And that is even taken into account things like retail or guest parking. And we're just concerned about overflow because Cornwallis is just too narrow for parking. And, you know, our neighborhood's not for the overflow. Next slide, please. And then proximity impacts. I mean, having, you know, heavy construction, it will destroy tree roots, and, and the increase in runoff will weaken them. And Canterbury, our neighborhood, has already been plagued by expensive tree losses. So, you know, we're concerned about trees falling on houses. I mean, a tree has already fallen and hit our neighbor's house. You know, I got, I'm surrounded, I got trees on one side, and I got kids up in my upstairs, and I don't want to do anything that could potentially jeopardize those additional tree roots. And then lastly, our limited buffer, which, you know, could fall after construction. I mean, that's, it's beautiful. And I feel if it's taken down, it will change the character of our neighborhood. Thank you.
My name's Brent Strawn. I live at 1234 Birch Park Road, also in the Canterbury subdivision. We have slides, but you can look at that later if you'd like. I just want to draw your attention to the community's concern with ecological impact, especially the addition of a large number of parking spots that would create impervious ground for parking, which is certain to affect the floodplain, something that Durham suffers with already, and it's something that we deal with in our own neighborhood already. Part of my property sits on the larger floodplain, as do many of my neighbors, even more so with the Colony Park neighborhood that is adjacent to ours. Flooding impacts are several, deleterious and well-known. We've already experienced this. There is the slide of the recent tree that fell from that wet area into my own house, damaging our retaining wall. So our deep concern is that this development will have a profoundly negative impact on things like flooding, even and especially on the parts of the property there where there is no construction. For example, the project will require invasion of what is supposed to be protected wetland in construction of septic and other such things, sewage. And that doesn't yet mention invasion or affecting of the tree buffer areas, especially between 15501 and the parcel. So in sum, we think the proposed development is poised to do real damage to the Sandy Creek ecosystem and be seriously out of step with the local environment, including the local built environment of West Cornwallis and Duke Forest.
Good evening, Vice Chair Cameron and Tewa Lee, Planning Commissioners here. My name is Tony Rucker, and I'm the President of Canterbury HOA. We are a community of about 58 homes adjacent to the proposed site. The proximity of 15501 to the development proposed site is a real concern of our community, particularly since this project is currently only proposing one point of egress and, egress and ingress from the site. Now, we're concerned about the hazards that this would create for motorists, pedestrians, cyclists, and Fire Station Number 11, which is just up the street. We believe many of the concerns, and if you could pull up the slide, if that's possible. We have some, okay. We believe many of the concerns of this proposal could be solved with a smaller site. We certainly believe that increased density around these areas is appropriate, but the type of density that, it's not a density, it's the appropriate location per the intersection. We could achieve all those things in the FLUM and still have a project that people can live in, provide additional housing for people of, the residents of Durham, and at the same time meet and not exacerbate some of the issues that I mentioned. The smaller footprint would give the developer the flexibility to configure the footprint of the building in a manner which would allow them to keep many of the 100-year mature trees of there. Opacity is a big issue with our community. This would allow the developer to build his structure because he had a smaller footprint, but we would not have the architectural continuity issues and also the community character issues that we have. We ask respectfully that this application be denied for many of the reasons I just stated. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There were more slides.
Okay. Thank you. I know we have a couple of other presentations, so if community members can say next slide or just to help us out, thank you.
Do we have anyone else to speak that was not part of this group? All right. Do we have a, is that that Excel spreadsheet I was emailed?
What I suggest doing is going through the, just the list in Zoom to see who wants to speak on this case.
Okay, we have some people here.
For the, for the virtual component.
We have people here, though, that raised their hand.
Did they sign up? We have the signup sheet.
Did they sign up? Did you all, yes, the signup sheet.
Does everybody done signing up?
Thank you, Gary. The first person that has signed up is Carissa Edwards.
Mrs. Virginia Wiggins, who is here in present, has yielded her time to me. Can that be accommodated?
What is your question? I'm sorry.
Mrs. Virginia Wiggins, who is here and plan to speak, has yielded her time to me. Can that be accommodated tonight?
That's fine.
Wonderful, thank you. Good evening. My name is Carissa Edwards. I live at 4 Creekview Lane in Durham. I'm at the Townhouse Complex, about 40 years old, community that's directly southern of this site. I'm going to give you some context here with regards to my professional background. I work for a large real estate investment trust. That means I build apartment complexes for a living. I also design swimming pools on the side, which means I have an odd amount of background to talk about how water moves and how it doesn't move and also standard development practices with regards to ethical development. Something I'd like to bring to your attention is to how this particular developer has essentially made a mockery of Durham's planning process through lack of transparency and outright fibbing to the community during those recorded community meetings. Examples being getting direct questions from the community as to specifics and the developer stating that those numbers had not, were not known or had not been calculated yet. Imagine my surprise that when the plans for tonight were posted, to see those questions directly answered in documents that predated the meeting by six months. I'd also like to bring to your attention the impact of stormwater on this particular lot. If you look at the lot, over 70 or 60 to 70%, depending on how you measure it, is an existing floodplain. So, when you keep that in mind, in addition to the 24% impervious surface impact ratio that state of North Carolina recognizes, right, that number being, any impervious surface above 24% is known to have a statistically significant impact on the surrounding environment. The developers lists their current impervious surface as 29%, but what I'd like you to consider is that 29% is in addition to the floodplain of approximately 60%, which means that we're looking to have an impaired ground on this lot in the 80 to 90% range. This is something that will impact directly the taxpayers and the long-term residents of Durham, but not the developer. Also, directly to the south side of this lot is the Sandy Creek watershed, which City of Durham has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars putting towards restoration efforts within the last 10 years. This is all public record. That restoration effort was done because of the watershed's inability to maintain or even handle the existing water problems in the area. Please tell me how adding an 80 to 90% impact of water is not going to just decimate not only that watershed, but the long-term homes, townhomes and condos that have already existed within that realm. This, of course, this site also drains down into the Jordan Lake watershed and so there's implications regarding that. I encourage you to deny this motion in standing with us that Durham is for development and for business, but only when it's done the right way. Thank you.
Next, we have Larry Reed. And please remember to state your name and your address.
Thank you. I'm Larry Reed, 2407 Tryon Road. I am a resident of Colony Park and our presentation tonight, just hearing what Carissa laid out, is just wants to expand on it to show the real concerns we have for our community and our individual homeowners with flooding and runoff that we've got. So, we thought it would be best to show photographic evidence. A picture was worth 10,000 words and we have a whole variety of pictures here. And there was earlier discussion about the abstract term of a 100-year flood. I think this will underscore it. And the first point we wanted to make is that we are adjacent to Sandy Creek and so we get the runoff from there that then eventually goes on to Lake Jordan. Our concern is flooding, environmental pollution, health impacts, impacts on roads, things along this way. Could, we have the first picture, please? This is a backyard. The Dewits were standing on the deck, looking out at their backyard and you can see the flooding over across Chambers House across there. And he's had to replace his HVACs and wooding, wood flooring and things along that line. And you notice the year, 2018. Next slide, please. 2015, a similar picture, a different flood. You can see the flow water going through there. Next slide, please. This is from Tanglewood, looking at the floodwater coming across from that home into our community lot. Next slide, please. 2011, you can see the young man there with a bike up to his wheels and he's looking at the playground that we have in our community lot. Next slide, please. From Tanglewood, next slide, please. That's our community lot. That's our overflowing pool, our picnic table, our playground on the other end. This is what we celebrate, our community events multiple times each year.
Thank you.
Can't use it when it's flooding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your time. Next, we have, I believe it's Dee Warren.
My name's Dee Warner. I live at 202 Maywe Drive in the Development Canterbury. I live very close to the retention pond. And I'll tell you a little story. I moved down here in November of 2019 and my grandkids, I have two of them, 10 and 12, were very excited about my moving to Canterbury because they were going to have some more interesting biking to do. Presently, they live in the city of Durham, close to the Tobacco Trail and they constantly are exploring that Tobacco Trail. And they said, wow, now we'll be able to bike to the Duke Trails in the woods, we're going to be able to bike to El Bueller and then we can go up Western Boulevard and we'll be able to go that City Park on Pickett. Well, guess what? For them to go to any of those places, they got to go on Cornwallis, the most dangerous street I've ever seen in my life. There's no way I can let those grandkids go up on Cornwallis Road and still be a good grandmother. So, I have had to be this evil grandmother and say, your bikes are forbidden to come to my house because I'm concerned that something will happen to you because 10 and 12-year-old kids will say they won't leave the development, but don't believe them. They'll be up on Cornwallis before you know it and then something will happen and I will be upset in a tragedy that I can't even think about right now. Cornwallis Road can take absolutely no more traffic. It's dangerous as it is now and it will be more dangerous if this develop, proposal goes through. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Rick Larson.
I'm Rick Larson. I live at 2439 Tryon Road in the Colony Park subdivision, just up the road from the proposed development. I'm intimately familiar with the property where this prop, where this development is proposed. My dog Chip and I walk the streets, the woods and the trails in and around these developments many times a week and I've spent a lot of time on the small parcel of land where this development is proposed. It's squeezed in, I want you to understand, squeezed in between 15501, Sandy Creek and the floodplain, which we've talked about, and Cornwallis Road. Between our streets and the proposed development is the Canterbury neighborhood. I was in this hall many years ago protesting the 220 Townhouse development that was proposed for the area where the 58 homes of Canterbury exist and I was adamantly opposed to that. I am, I made my peace with it because I think the final form that the Canterbury development took is an appropriate amount of development for the property it occupies. It has the roads, the wastewater infrastructure and the acreage it needs to support it. That is not the case with this, this proposed development. There is just, I want to talk about just one topic and that's parking. There is no way, there's no way that a 90-unit development on this site can meet the UDO requirement of two, let alone one, parking slots per, per site. It's just physically impossible to put that much parking on this, on this site. And since it's squeezed between Cornwallis and 15501 and the Sandy Creek, Sandy Creek and the floodway, as our neighbors said, the city and the university have worked very hard to keep that clean and to keep the flow into Jordan Lake clean. There's not any room for a structured wetland, which is what Canterbury put in. So, that means there's no way to clean the oil and the grease that are going to come off the parking lot that's going to be required for this, for this development. Just can't do it. There's just not space for it. As you know.
Your, your time is up.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
Parking, thank you.
Next signup we have is Alan Dippe.
My name's Alan Dippe. I'm a resident of 2514 Tryon Road, also in the Colony Park neighborhood here in Durham. I wanted to add my perspective as, to this conversation as a longtime bike commuter to Duke, who at one time pedaled daily east and west on Cornwallis Road, including the frontage of this property. And I say at one time because several years ago I changed my bike commute to a far more circuitous route involving Ridge Road and Pickett Road. It's a significantly longer ride, but it's one that allows me to stay off of Cornwallis Road entirely. And I know, I know other riders that feel the same way and have made the same decisions. When we're considering a development that's attempting to work around a dearth of adequate and required vehicle parking by providing e-bikes and scooter availability, I think we have to look closely at this roadway in terms of safety for all users. While I'm generally a fan of any effort to get more bikes, more people on bikes in the Bull City, I think this attempt to paint Cornwallis Road as, as a bike or scooter-friendly facility is, is flat out incorrect and inaccurate in my experience. Cornwallis has a number of factors working against it. The eastbound bike lanes are intermittent, not contiguous, which forces the cyclist to switch from five feet of space to sometimes a very narrow shoulder, sometimes abruptly. And even that is, 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 it's probably more precarious than on the other side of Cornwallis, which has no bike lanes at all. Anyone who's driven east in the morning or west in the afternoon along this section of road knows that the glare from the sun can be pretty intense and blinding, making bikes more difficult to see during peak commuting times. And Cornwallis heads downhill in both directions as it approaches the intersection of 15501. This means, assuming the lights are green, that cyclists are traveling at a higher rate of speed and the cars, many of whom are turning right onto a highway ramp, are as well. In all my rides along this route over the, over the time, I've managed to avoid any accidents, but my closest calls and the ones that keep me off this road now were being cut off by drivers at these two ramps, one of which is very close to the proposed development's egress. I hope you'll agree that this development is simply too large for this space and a fleet of bikes and scooters isn't going to change that.
Thank, thank you. I'm sorry, but we can't have any applause. Thank you. Now, we'll turn to the webinar. Arthur Zucco.
Thank you, Council. My name is Arthur Zucco. I live at 115 Sunburst Drive in the Canterbury subdivision. You've heard from some of my neighbors today. I appreciate the time and as I've listened today, in our particular hearing and the one prior, what's standing out to me today is what you're hearing is risk over inconvenience. There are risks that this development poses because of the southbound exit from 15501, potentially backing up traffic. There are risks because of this development that may pose to a school bus stop 1,000 feet down from it. There are risks that this development poses because as I was listening at 6:50 PM, a fire engine drove by Cornwallis Drive outside of my home. There are risks because on the February 8 meeting, the developer spoke about the 20-year requirements of stormwater, not 100-year. So, those risks are items that should come to the council for disapproval of this particular plan. Additionally, I don't think we've heard anything about affordable housing, which I think other council members expressed an interest in hearing about. Thank you for the amount of time. I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Kralowski.
Hi there. Planning Commissioners, you've heard the voices of my fellow community members today and they are concerned about making a situation in a restricted corridor worse. The developer has stretched facts to the best of his ability, circumventing issues that will impact motorists and cyclist safety, overcrowded district schools and emergency fire services. During several public and private meetings, he has been inconsistent or incomplete with figures regarding affordable housing, parking, NC DOT's input, appropriate greenway usage of e-bikes, which are not allowed on the maps that he has shown and should therefore not qualify him for parking discounts. All of this has challenged our ability to, to even understand what we are working with here. Much of what he has put in his proposal includes things that are non-committal, waiting on input from other bodies, or asking you to base decisions today on other future city endeavors that have no concrete timeline for us. One of the themes I've heard and seen throughout this entire process is that this prevents worser options. He wants to convince us all that the northern tiny, two and a half acres, just a third of the property, could be used for something more intense and he is thereby helping. Two and a half acres, that's it. If we were to push the dwelling units per acre to 20, we would still only get 50 units, not the 90 that he's requesting. So, really, what could be worse? Is this really saving us from the potential of a fast food services 2,400 trips per day? Commissioners, please. I know with the projects that you look at in a week, you do not believe that Chick-fil-A with the multiple roads and ramps and things that that usually requires is something that we could expect to see here alongside a major highway at an intersection. So, what could support Durham's growth while still being reasonable? For starters, it could be an appropriately sized residential project like I mentioned above. Could be small offices like the ones I've worked at in Durham for the past 26 years, where I make just two trips per day with my 12 coworkers. It could also even be a storage facility, which helps people choose to move to Durham, that depending upon size sees less trips in a year than this project proposes to see in one day. Planning Commissioners, with that all being said.
Time.
Here are our concerns tonight. We understand the need for change in growth.
Michael, can you please go back and state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, Michael Kralowski at 1232 Birch Park. And I just wanted to say I appreciate your time and upholding the UDO.
Thank you. All right. Do you want to have the applicant come back? Yeah, applicant, do you want to come back up and respond to any of the concerns that were expressed? We have more people? I'm, I'm sorry, hold on. We have Michael Hennessy on the Zoom. Michael Hennessy? That's the former person up there. That's not Michael Hennessy.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm sorry for the difficulty. Michael Hennessy, 2519 Lanier Place in the Welcome Circle neighborhood. Really, there's not much more than I can add. I support everything my neighbors have said because they brought up all the issues there are. said because they brought up all the issues there are. I don't know if any of you have actually been to that site. It is completely incompatible with a development of this size. We are not NMBs. We are not against development. We completely support the need for housing in Durham and we, we understand that. But the scope of this is entirely compatible with that intersection, with that site. The, the traffic issues are, are very, very intense here because as people noted, almost nobody goes anywhere near the speed limit. They're speeding. It's, to get out of my neighborhood, which is across the street, you have to take a right. It's just, you know, in heavy traffic, it's right by that highway. I don't know how people will get in and out. And, you know, safety first. I think this is a, a site that can work for both developers and neighbors and the city of Durham. And then, most importantly, after the safety is the environmental aspects, which, you know, I leave that to the other experts because it, it's just very, very clear what the water issues are here. So thank you for your forbearance and I, I hope you deny this permit.
Thank you. All right. I'm making sure there are no more speakers on the webinar. Don't see any. Okay. Applicant, if you would like to come back up and address any of the concerns that were voiced.
Sure. Good evening. Josh Ranky, 5808 Farringdon Place, Raleigh, North Carolina, State Traffic Lead with Remy Kempin Associates. So I performed the traffic impact analysis. I just figured I'd kind of go through some of that. Hopefully, I don't know there are specific questions, but more concerns. So this development is about one-sixth of what a typical TIA threshold would be for DOT and about a third of what the city would require. City didn't require this. We still perform for the exact reason that everybody's vocalized is the proximity to the ramps there. That is also the reason some people have vocalized some concerns about the storage length for a left turn lane. That is something that our design team is working with the DOT. DOT has ultimate plans for that interchange to sort of be, they want to make sure that anything we design there would be compatible with any changes in the future there. They don't want anything designed that would conflict with that. The storages, like I said, we actually go out and collect data. We, we project things out to the future. We add in the site traffic. We run analysis. We run simulations to kind of see how this will be acting in the future. What we're seeing there is very minimal storages. These, these daily trips, less than 500 daily trips during the peak time, we might have 24 vehicles turning left into the site. The concerns about speeding, typically if we're saying there's heavy traffic and they're speeding, those aren't during the same times of the day. It's very hard to speed in heavy traffic. So I think when you have these speeding concerns, we're not going to have as many people coming or going from the apartments. There'll be more during those peak periods, going off to work, coming back. The, the typical storages, once again, I know I've heard different numbers. I think there's some confusion because there is an existing driveway out there and the site team can talk more about that, but they are maximizing that. The driveway is being shifted further to the west away from the interchange. That is something we want to make sure not only do we have the storage for the vehicles that might be stacking up to turn into the site to wait for a gap in the through for the other movement, but also to kind of slow down and decelerate into that. So we're looking, I think it's about 160 feet and I can have them speak to that. That's where DOT is making sure that all that will not conflict with any future plans they have. So that is why they're, the design team is still working with DOT is because of some potential future interchange plans. They want to make sure they're maximizing that storage so we don't have any issues, no safety concerns. That is exactly why traffic impact analysis was done. It's not for the high volumes. This is a relatively low generator for a site. It is because of that proximity that safety concerns. The capacity out there, we looked at that even at the interchange ramps. We're talking a level service C. That is fairly uncommon in Durham. Usually we're looking at Ds, Es, Fs, things like that. So once again, it is with the safety concerns in mind that we're looking at all these design things and working with NCDOT, with the design team. I'm happy to answer any other questions. Like I said, there weren't any specific, just kind of more concerns that hopefully that addresses them. And I apologize for my voice.
All right. At this.
Oh, sorry. We've got another. Good evening again. Tim Somerville with Stewart, 101 West Main Street. Going off of what Josh mentioned, we are in constant working with the DOT on this driveway configuration. I don't know if it's maybe not understood, but there is, there is an existing driveway on the site. The DOT is requiring us to push the new driveway as far west as possible to the property line to increase that storage length. We're adding another 50 feet of storage, which is about two or three car lengths into the site. So we are, we are working with the DOT. We are pushing that driveway to maximize that continuous left turn lane all the way through to get vehicles off of the highway into that left turn lane where they can safely wait to turn left while, you know, vehicles going westbound can continue safely. Just wanted to go back on some of the other notes that were brought up. You know, it's a lot of concern about the environmental. Yes, this, this project is located adjacent to the Sandy Creek Greenway or Sandy Creek, which ultimately drains into Jordan Lake. We are, the site has a maximum of 70% impervious, which we realize that's impossible to do with the existing floodplain that is on the site. We are doing everything we can to limit what the impervious surface would be within the developable area of the site. You know, there was a note about, you know, the state has regulations about 24% impervious draining to a floodplain, but they also recognize that, you know, higher density is a little bit more realistic. So the state has come up with guidelines, not guidelines, laws for treating stormwater, capturing, detaining stormwater. And the city of Durham has adopted those into their ordinance. So we will be meeting all of the city of Durham as well as the state of North Carolina requirements for detention to limit downstream flooding as well as provide filtration. There was a comment about, you know, not having the ability to put a, construct a wetland or a standard pond, and that's correct. We just don't have the room for it. So we are proposing underground filters, potential pervious pavers on the site that will allow water to naturally infiltrate into the ground and back into the watershed rather than just going into a pond and then discharging directly into a stream. So we are working to provide both environmental, water quality and quantity. And then the last note I hate to hear about is parking. There is, there's a couple of comments about the, the city of Durham's parking requirement for residential is two units per acre. And, you know, a comment was made that there's no way that that can be met and that's agreeable. But parking two units per acre when a majority of your development is studios and one-bedroom apartment isn't realistic and just creates seas of unused parking that you see all over the place. And I understand the city of Durham is looking at making parking reductions. There are mechanisms in the UDO to, to reduce parking requirements to be more marketable for what the developer actually needs. So we will be using those to provide, you know, less than what the city of Durham requires, but what is actually needed for the development.
All right. Thank you. At this time, we'll open up the Commissioner comments and questions. Commissioner Davis.
So my question is for the applicant. So the traffic part, somebody touched on the DOT part. So with that, if, even if you move the driveway as far west as you could, do you not see the cause for concern for traffic to potentially back up the ramp and then hinder traffic on 15501? Because, I mean, somebody said, what, 24 cars, right? I think somebody said. If you've got that many people waiting, don't you think there's going to be, you know, backup on the ramp for folks waiting to go up Cornwallis?
Sure. So that's 24 cars during a peak hour. So they obviously, they don't come like one every two point whatever minutes. They also don't all come at the same time. So that's why we run the simulation. So what that does is to try to create the most accurate. We're seeing queue lengths of about 40 cars max, or not 40 cars, 40 feet maximum. So what that does is when we run these simulations, it says, here's, you know, you'll have about two cars backing up at any given point in time before they have a gap and can make that turn. So once again, it's not 24 cars there at the same time. That would imply it was a very coordinated effort. Everybody left work at the same time. It's also in the PM that we have the most people coming back. Those have more gaps. There aren't as many people going towards the interchange in the PM. It's the AM that's the heavier volume that they're conflicting with. So the storage isn't 24 times the length of a car. That's not what we're looking at because they don't all come during the same time. So we, we are needing far less than even, like I said, we're, the main reason we're doing this is maximizing, making sure you can decelerate, get into that turn lane without slowing down in the through traffic and still then have adequate storage to hold those cars.
Okay. Have you ever been through there like 5:30, 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock at night?
Not seven, but yes, during the peak, yeah, sort of that 6 o'clock.
I drive through there quite a bit and at Cornwallis there, I mean, it's always bumper to bumper there at 15501 there at that exit. It doesn't matter what time, like from 5 to 7, even on that exit with people trying to get off, whatever, and then going, waiting for that stoplight. So, I mean, my concern is the proximity there to the exit. It's not necessarily the storage for me. It's the ones that would be waiting to come off with the additional people that would be going right there.
So you're saying coming off the ramps, on the ramp itself, the additional vehicles?
Yeah. So, I mean, because during that 5 to 7 o'clock timeframe, that's when I go through there. And, I mean, it's unreal, the amount of traffic that gets, you know, kind of bumper to bumper through there.
Yeah.
So I think if you add that and then you push it up, there's going to be, you know, potentially cause for wrecks, things like that, you know. Personally for me, that's, that's the only reason I will vote no for this because of the traffic.
And so that, that, once again, that is something we look at signal timings also because we are looking at, we look at this, what we call level service. And that's essentially, unfortunately, it's like grades in school. A is the best, E is poor. A lot of intersections in, in cities operate at level service F. We are seeing a level service C there. We did recommend DOT looks at those timings along there mainly to that. And that's probably why they also have a plan for interchange is you're saying there are already concerns, there are already issues out there. We did look at signal timing adjustments as part of our improvements. So, and once again, keep in mind, that's not all 24 cars are coming from the same direction on the ramps. They're coming Cornwallis heading west. They're coming off the ramps. The majority, we do believe, would be for the ramps. But that's the 24 is the cars that would be turning into the site from all directions in that peak time in the PM. So I understand, but it is a handful of cars. We are looking at that. We, I mean, the district is definitely very in touch with that. If they had any concerns, and once again, we look at signal, adjusting signal timings. These are things we look at when we're analyzing the future. It's hard. I know Durham looks at signal system things fairly regularly anyway, but it's sometimes it's good to look at this individually and say, we have concerns there and we recommend adjusting those also. That is something DOT does. It's not the developer goes in and starts messing around with signal timings, but it is something we've considered in the TIA that they're aware of.
Thank you. Do, just a reminder that we do have Earlene Thomas available for us from transportation to ask any questions that we may have. We just have to call on her for clarification. Commissioner Williams.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Cameron. So my concerns are always environmental, but being a lifer in Durham, the traffic impacts, and you're saying that there will be 24 cars that will travel in and out of this particular development. Is that correct? That's, that's the number that you came up with?
What we do is, it's not that I come up with. It's, it's actual studies from all across the US saying, here's a type of land use. It's what DOT requires us to do. So that's not 24 entering and exiting. There are questions about the turning into the site. So that would be during a peak hour. So we look at peak hours. We assume all the peak hours coincide. So the peak hour for this development happens to be at the same time that the peak hour is for the adjacent streets because we go out there and collect data. So we say, here's what's going on out there. We project it up to the future and then we say, here's what that development is expected to generate during the peak time. So it is saying there is also an exiting component, but that's not what the concerns were about. It was what's entering at that driveway. Is that turn lane long enough, those sort of things. So that is in the PM, it's 24 vehicles. That is based on the Institute of Transportation Engineer. They put out a manual that studies these types of sites very specifically. Where are they located? Are they low-rise? Are they mid-rise? Are they high-rise types of apartments? All these things. They put out a manual, I think, I don't know, we're on the 11th edition. They put them out every couple of years with the latest data saying this is what it generates. They are actually studied. So it's not that I've come up with anything or DOT. DOT happens to follow those guidelines as do municipalities of what does the IT manual indicate that is.
Thank you. I would assume that the DOT manual would be much like the North Carolina Building Code, which is minimum expectations for construction. And I'm wondering if any of these studies were conducted when Duke has a home basketball game?
No, we, we look at, and it's not minimum. Minimum is, 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 I would say, not really something we do. We do conservative. So I would say in traffic analysis, we do conservative, but they pick a typical day. If not, same thing was brought up earlier with parking and all. If we said, what makes it work during that, there would be no trees, there would be no grass. Everything would be pavement for the worst possible condition. And so during, like if you say, is, what happens during a Duke basketball game? We're not going to study that condition and say that's typical. It would be difficult. It's, it's not typical. It's happens during a certain part of the season. And once again, we might say, well, we need four lanes of whatever. Let's rip out the trees, those sort of things. So we're doing, like I said, as we're following what I consider fairly conservative guidelines that DOT and the municipality has put in place, we're not looking at a worst case. What we would, you might do is, I've done these sort of studies, is Duke might say, oh, we have these events. We want an event coordination study to make sure we're not negatively impacting. Because once again, we're talking about an apartment complex, not what has Duke done to the roads out there is what is this apartment complex doing and how do we mitigate the apartment's traffic. So if Duke, I'm, I'm happy to do one of those studies. I've done plenty of those also if we have concerns. That would, that to me is not a typical condition and NCDOT is looking at typical. So it's not a minimum. It's a typical condition they're looking at as well as the city.
Well, that explains a lot and that helps me understand a lot in terms of traffic patterns, concerns, why we have bike lanes where people don't ride bikes, why we need better bike lanes where people do ride bikes. And I stand with the community on this one because the impacts from this particular development have devastating traffic implications, especially with new schools that are being constructed on South Roxborough Road, new elementary schools. And being from Durham, I'm in traffic on 15501. Durham Academy is not too far from this. I'm a, I'm a cut over, I'm a crossover, I'm a take academy. And then you've got another elementary, you've got Lakewood Elementary School that's not too far from this particular development. And as you continue to try to design impact-driven traffic studies, it's conservative, but it's not operative. And it's no fault of your own. I've worked for the state. So I understand. I worked for DPS and hazard mitigation. I understand how this works. But I also understand the importance of preserving quality of life for residents that are going to move into these apartments and to take advantage of this land. Because though it may not be a typical day, I can guarantee you, if Duke has a home game, I'm not going anywhere in my car. Not if I can help it. And I'm definitely not going to ride my bike. And I understand that those are not typical conditions, but it can be hazardous for the residents that are there. And it can be hazardous for the ones that will be there. Not to mention, we're still trying to navigate developments that have been approved that you can't study yet because they're not built.
And, and just to kind of answer that. So once again, and I'm happy to, because you're saying devastating effects of this development. And I'm like, this development is a low. You're saying a, a worst case potential, which it exists out there already. In, in terms of what we look at that's not out there yet, that is something that that's why they, that we, we meet, we scope things with the city and DOT and say, what are adjacent developments that we need to be considering? What type of growth rate should we use to project things to the future? Then what happens is if you say, well, now this development comes along, what about the next? They'll take this development, say a traffic impact analysis was done for this. We incorporate that. So it's sort of building blocks that build on each other. So we are, we look at, we, we grow that traffic that when we collected the data, we grow it out to the future year. We add in our site traffic. So we are looking at that holistically. Like I said, this isn't the purpose of the traffic impact analysis, nor do I think it would be fair to say the developer should fix a Duke basketball game issue is, that's kind of a bigger thing. Probably Duke basketball should fix that. But I know NCDOT looks at these things and says, here's what we want you to study. If they had a concern where they thought the apartment might be a higher trip. If they had a concern where they thought the apartment might be a higher trip generator during that time period, they might have us look at that. But we're looking at, when is the apartment? And it's not, they might be now some of those ticket holders or whatever, so it might not add traffic. But it is something that we're looking at the mitigation for this site, not can this site fix an existing problem somewhere around there, anything like that, when we look at a traffic study.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Cartwright?
Just a quick, maybe, observation here. I don't know if you've worked with the Canterbury Homeowners Association at all on trying to resolve this problem. They have a parcel adjacent to yours, which could potentially allow you to shift this holding lane up a little further. I don't know if you've looked into that. And also, and this is probably a stretch, but, you know, coming through their dead end and getting some sort of easement through that land that they have there, that potentially solves some problems. You know, I don't know, just, again, trying to problem solve here. I don't know if that's something you've looked at or not. Sure.
I'm Ernie Brown. I'm the applicant. I've multiple times have asked them to work with them on Lot 59, and said even most recently, saying, hey, guys, I know traffic's a big problem. You guys don't really seem to have a design of what you want to do with Lot 59. What about if I work with you on grading it? It would be much cheaper for me to grade everything all at once than it would be for them to do it separately. So, I said, hey, when we go through construction, how about I work on grading it? I'll turn it into a pad ready, so you can turn it into green spaces your neighborhood has said you wanted. And also, too, I can take about 850 square feet for, to expand the road on that side. And I've offered that to them more than once.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Cameron. My question is for the applicant. It's clear to me that this community has a serious flooding problem. And I've also heard tonight that you're in a position to follow all the rules and all the laws, as you described, as it relates to the retention of this water. I'm not sure that's going to be enough. Maybe somebody can come and address my concerns about the problems related to this water? Because I don't see this situation getting better, potentially with a new development.
No, with the new development, there's no way we can, you know, improve on the flooding issues there. I don't know what the cause of their flooding issues are. Their development is upstream of ours. Ours is below theirs. So, any water that comes off ours can't have any impact on theirs, because it is, you know, higher at an elevation. You know, I'd be happy to take a look at your flooding issues on a separate, you know, come out there and review it, not part of this project, obviously, but just, you apparently have something, you know, as a civil engineer, I'd be happy to look at it. But there's nothing this project can do about to minimize any of the flooding issues that were shown in those photos.
So, you said your project is down below theirs, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and so, so potentially, this project, this development, will have the same problems, right?
Potentially, but we'll do our engineering judgment to not cause any stormwater issues on our development.
I mean, I can't see, based on the brief bit of evidence that I've been shown here this evening, that there won't be a problem here, and a severe problem that's shared in the development that is just adjacent to yours. And I have a lot of concerns about that.
Yeah, unfortunately, I just, I don't have enough, or have done enough research on what the cause of the flooding issue on there is, but I can say that this development would not impact that in the future.
Any other questions? Comments from commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Morgan?
I'll just make one comment. I actually went out and actually looked at the lane, and I could see there are some issues with traffic. But it seems like that, to me, the real choke point is the access into the facility or into the, into the development itself. Certainly, either whether you're going westbound or eastbound on Cornwallis, you're going to have traffic, you're going to have issues. And so, it seems like the right turn lane that's actually proposed as well, we talked about the left turn lane, right turn lane seems rather short, too, to get into it. So, you've got people coming over the hill and potentially running into somebody where they just don't see him because it's all backed up. So, my only concern is, is that the development seems a little bit large. I don't know whether the applicant would consider scaling it down a little bit, just to, you know, alleviate some of the traffic. I think that was some of the neighbors' concerns, that I heard at least, that the building was tall, a lot of units. If it was like two-thirds of the size, maybe it might be a better fit. So, it's just my comments.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the commissioners?
Chair Cameron?
Yes.
Earlene Thomas would like to address some of the comments made tonight and ask some questions, if that's okay?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Earlene Thomas, Transportation. I just wanted to share with some recent conversations that I've had with NC DOT regarding the site access. My understanding is they are considering or requiring further restricting the access point to be right-in, right-out only, with some accommodation for U-turns made sort of further down line or west of the access point. And I do understand that those conversations are ongoing. I've not been a part of those conversations, so maybe the applicant might want to speak to what those conversations have been and any potential changes that that might bring to the application.
As I mentioned, we are in conversation with the DOT. We did, we did do a TIA, the TIA, excuse me, TIA recommended the left turn, exclusive left turn lane in the site, while also restricting left turns out of the site. But now, as Josh mentioned, the DOT is looking at potential improvements to the 15501 Cornwallis intersection. They're having us look at some additional studies to extend the left turn lane even further down the street, providing a U-turn, which would prevent, which would only allow right-in, right-turn-out only. So, we're working with the DOT to see if there is available right-of-way within that corridor to provide that type of scenario. So, that is what we are working with the DOT. You know, the DOT has ultimate say of issuing a driveway permit on this development. So, whatever they say as far as the driveway access goes, we'll abide by it. Like Earlene said, we are working with the DOT at a potential right-in, right-out scenario.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions before we close the public hearing? All right. We can close the public hearing. And if someone can give me a motion for this.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take case Z 22, Quadruple 08, the 2201 West Cornwallis, to be forwarded to the City Council with favorable recommendation.
Can I get a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Morgan and seconded by Commissioner Cartwright. May we have the roll call vote?
Yes. Chair Cameron?
No.
Commissioner Baker?
No.
Commissioner Shigeras?
No.
Commissioner Cartwright?
No.
Commissioner Davis?
No.
Commissioner Morgan?
No.
Commissioner Valentine?
No.
Commissioner Carmen Williams?
No.
Commissioner Zuri Williams?
No.
Motion fails unanimously.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to take our required break, and we will return at 7:38 PM.
I mean, that location in the city is, it's not compatible.
That's why I'm like, where you come from, Durham.
Yeah. Or, or ask nobody.
That's why all these TIA's that they do, they're trying. Because, like you said, I wouldn't say it was minimal, it was conservative. It's the same thing.
It's the same thing, yeah.
If you have ideas about projects we should fund in our next round of participatory budgeting, we want to hear from you. Participatory budgeting allows residents to vote directly on how to spend part of the public budget. The third cycle will soon be getting underway, and we are now accepting ideas for which one-time projects should be supported. Project ideas can include physical infrastructure, such as playgrounds, bus shelters, and public art, and technology improvements, like Wi-Fi umbrellas or solar panels on bus shelters for charging mobile devices. Community enhancement ideas, such as planting street trees, are also encouraged. Ideas are being accepted online until December 10th, as well as through upcoming PB Durham events. More information about those events, as well as how to submit ideas online, can be found at durham.mysocialpinpoint.com/pb durham.
So, Councilmember Williams, let's get started with you, okay? You represent Ward 3. You're a restaurant owner, an education activist, and a former educator, and a school administrator. Now, with all of this experience, what is it that you feel like you bring to the council?
I've lived the life of seeking, you know, throughout this journey of, how can I not only be a part of my community, but how can I play my part in making it better? You know? And it was, for me, retroactively looking back, like, wow, I'm actually in a really fortunate situation to be able to have, explored from one end of the social spectrum to the other, from education to entrepreneurship, from employee to employer. And from those perspectives, you know, it's like, wow, we get to, you know, be a part of contributing to the solutions.
Councilmember Halseyheim, what has, for you, been the biggest difference between your role in the community and your service on council?
So, again, I was behind the scenes, doing a lot of volunteering and kind of just boots-on-the-ground work. And I used to say, because I'm a pretty direct person, I used to say, what are they doing? You know, why aren't they making some changes? They know we need housing. They know we have environmental health issues. They know we have all these. And I used to say that. And I used to hold them to a standard of, it needs to get done, and it needs to get done now. And now, as a council member, I am realizing that, you know, government takes time. You know, I'm realizing that there's policies and procedures that sometimes hinder us from making the decisions that maybe other people in the community may think we need to make. And so, the only way I can kind of combat that is, first of all, be able to educate myself, to make informed decisions.
To call the meeting back to order. Bring before you case number Z 2200023. Ready for the staff report? Ready for the staff report?
Alexander Cahill with the Planning Department, here to present on Z2200023, 1311 NC Highway 54. Staff received an application to rezone a property at 1311 NC Highway 54. This property is currently in the city jurisdiction in the suburban tier. This is about a one-and-a-half acre site. Presently, it's zoned commercial neighborhood with a development plan, and the applicant is proposing to rezone this to commercial general with a text-only development plan limiting some of the uses. The existing future land use map designates the site as commercial. There would be no change to the future land use map if this zoning were approved. This does follow the Falls Jordan Lake protection area, and the proposal is, again, to change from the CN with a development plan to CG, limiting uses. You can see the context of the zoning map. The site is the hatched area. It's a little hard to see on the purple side, but it's surrounded by residential suburban 20 to the north, residential suburban 10, residential suburban multifamily, commercial neighborhood, and office and institutional. You can see the site location. It's already a developed site. This is to accommodate redevelopment of the site, which the applicant will speak more to. The text-only development plan is only able to limit uses at this time. They are prohibiting the following uses in this rezoning: passenger terminals, utility centers, indoor recreation, comfort center, electronic gaming, firing range, nightclubs, bars, hotels, motels, extended stays, bed and breakfast, commercial parking, payday lenders, self-storage, vehicle sales, and manufactured home sales would all be prohibited under this text-only development plan. Staff determines, to the best of our ability, that this request is consistent with the conference plan and other adopted ordinances and policies. Applicant is available to answer any questions tonight about what this proposed development is for. Staff is also available to answer any questions tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We're opening up the public hearing, and we'll hear from the applicant.
Good evening. Is the PowerPoint pulled up on your screens? There we go. All right. Good evening, Vice Chair Cameron, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Patrick Biker. I'm with Morningstar Law Group. I live at 2614 Stewart Drive. I'm here tonight representing Moran Capital out of Charlotte, William Anderson. The partner with Moran that I've been working with for this project is here tonight as This agenda item pertains to 1311 Highway 54, where there is a vacant 11,000-square-foot drugstore on one-and-a-half acres that Moran Capital would like to redevelop. This site was the subject of a development plan, which was approved over 20 years ago, and that development plan mandated a drugstore inside an 11,000-square-foot building. As Commissioner Baker probably noticed, while we were on the campaign trail together for county commissioner, I am well past my sell-by date. And just to emphasize that point, I'm here before the Planning Commission tonight, asking for permission to tear down a building that I remember working on to get built about 20 years ago. If anyone remembers former city manager Lamont Ull, I recall talking to him about the Eckards Drugstore, and perhaps some commissioners remember that Eckards, and then later the Rite Aid at this high-traffic corner. Following Rite Aid's closure, the site has been vacant for the past several years. This type of redevelopment with this agenda item seems to me to exemplify the perfect application of the text-only development plan. The write-in, write-out access points for this site are already locked in. And please keep in mind that this corner has almost 35,000 cars per day going past this corner, 16,500 on Highway 54, and 18,000 on 751. In addition, as Mr. Cahill mentioned, the watershed protection section of the UDO limits impervious surface to 70%. Of course, the redevelopment of this site will bring the landscaping up to current UDO standards, and there are already sidewalks in place on both of the street frontages. So as you can see from our text-only development plan, we've eliminated several undesirable uses at this location, and all we're asking for is that the site be allowed to be redeveloped with the commercial uses that are typical for this part of Durham. And so to wrap up, Moran Capital would like to redevelop the site, put it back in use rather than having it sit empty. We've worked with the, we had a good neighborhood meeting about this. We've worked with the staff in regards to transportation issues, and so for all these reasons, we respectfully ask for your recommendation of approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have a sign-up sheet for speakers? That's it? And I don't see anyone on Zoom with their hand raised. So at this time, I'm asking the commissioners if you have any comments and/or questions. All righty. So at this time, we're going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion to move this forward.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take case Z220023, 1311 North Carolina Highway 54, case to be forwarded to the City Council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Morgan and seconded by Commissioner Baker. May we have the roll call vote?
Yes. Chair Cameron?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Shigaris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cutwright?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner MacIver?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sees?
Yes.
Commissioner Valentine?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmen Williams?
Yes.
And Commissioner Zuri Williams?
Yes.
It passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to case Z2200025.
DeMar Powell, Planning Department. Following cases, Z2225, Chapel Hill Road C Store for a proposed zoning map change. The proposal is located at 2945 Chapel Hill Road and 3036 University Drive. The site is within the suburban development tier and is within city limits. The proposal includes two parcels, which total 0.2 acres, that are currently zoned residential suburban 8 and residential suburban 10. The proposed zoning is commercial neighborhood with a text-only development plan to facilitate the reconstruction and site improvement of the existing convenience store on an adjacent property. The existing future land use map designation is low-density residential, and if the proposal is approved, staff recommend a change to the future land use map designation to be commercial. As mentioned, the existing zoning is residential suburban 8 and residential suburban 10. The existing convenience store and gas station are located on the adjacent property to the southwest, that is currently zoned commercial neighborhood. The aerial map shows the general location of the project. The existing convenience store can be seen on the adjacent property. There are a mix of uses in the area, but the site is adjacent to a number of residential properties on the east side. The applicant has included a text-only development plan in this proposal, and the applicant has proposed to limit the use of these two parcels to convenience store with gasoline sales. The applicant held a neighborhood meeting on May 24, 2022, and no social pinpoint comments were provided. Staff determines that this request is consistent with the conference of plan and other adopted ordinances and policies. And staff have also determined that the proposal would achieve the following: it would contribute to the land use diversity, provide an opportunity for site improvements that may benefit the surrounding neighborhood, and be compatible with the commercial land uses in the area while improving an existing convenience store. And staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have the applicant present?
Good evening. My name is Chris Rakowski with TMTLi Associates, 5011 South Park Drive, Durham, here representing the property owners of 2945 Chapel Hill Road and 3036 University Drive, along with Patrick Biker from Morningstar Law Group. Tonight, we're just requesting the rezoning for two parcels, approximately one-tenth of an acre each, that are adjacent to our existing convenience store with gasoline sales. Purposes of zoning, as DeMar said, is to allow for the expansion and redevelopment of the existing store into those two residential parcels that are currently sitting vacant. So we hope to expand the store from about 1,400 square feet to about 3,200, as well as provide a landscape buffer and wall to screen the store from the existing homes that are adjacent there, as well as expanding the parking area. So we hope you can support this case to expand the existing business that has operated in this location for decades. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any sign-up? Nope. Sign-up? All righty. Commissioner comments and questions? None? All right, closing the public hearing and asking for a motion to move this forward.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we take case Z220025, Chapel Hill C Store, to be forwarded to the City Council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Morgan and seconded by Commissioner Baker. May we have the roll call vote?
Chair Cameron?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Shigaris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cutwright?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner MacIver?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sees?
Yes.
Commissioner Valentine?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmen Williams?
Yes.
And Commissioner Zuri Williams?
Yes.
Okay, great. Passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the text amendments to the UDO.
Good evening again, Vice Chair Cameron, Planning Commission members. Alexander Cahill again with Planning Department, presenting to you tonight a staff-initiated text amendment. This is TC220002, entitled Development Plan Revisions. We're going to cover a few things in here, including the purpose of this, some key changes summarized for y'all, and then seek any guidance and feedback you have on it. So the purpose of this amendment is to revise the requirements within the UDO for zoning map changes with a development plan to provide more transparency in the process to community and governing bodies, shorten the length of the process to more closely align with neighboring jurisdictions, and make the process more accessible to local or small-scale developers and/or residents. In addition, the other purpose of this is to allow text-only development plans to accommodate additional proffers made by applicants. So some of the key changes that you'll see if you read the Development Plan Revisions text amendment is that there is an expansion of what will be allowed to be committed on a textual development plan. Right now, as you heard with the previous two cases, only limiting the use is allowed on a text-only development plan. We are proposing to expand that to allow basically anything that can be depicted with the written word. We also are adding a provision, which we already encourage as staff but want to codify, where there's a timing and enforcement mechanism that's required with all commitments. So that would be an example of, we want to, we'll build 15% of the affordable units by the time of site plan or by the certificate of occupancy. We're looking to restructure the ordinance so that it flows with how community members read it, with how applicants use it, and how staff should read it, so things don't get missed during reviews, and so that the community can help hold us accountable. We also are removing some existing information for requirements to allow for a development plan that identifies what is being proposed in excess of the UDO requirements. Sometimes it's confusing for community members, because they will depict a graphic development plan, and a lot of times, they're just showing conditions that are already required by the ordinance. A development plan should only show those requirements that are, or commitments that are in excess of the ordinance requirements. And then another, one of the, probably the bigger changes is that this would allow zoning districts that require a development plan to use a text-only development plan. For example, this would be the PDR District, the planned development residential. So if an applicant was able to depict everything in the written word, they would not have to do a graphic development plan. We also are looking to redefine the Types of Development Plan section to amend how graphic and textual plans can and should be used. Removing the Design Commitment section, which probably on its face sounds like maybe a scary prospect, but what we're seeing is, you know, staff have gone back and looked at all the development plans that we've received over the past, since 2020. What we're seeing is a recycling of commitments that keep happening, and they, they're not substantive. They'll be, I don't want to make light of it, but sometimes it'll be, it has a roof or it has, you know, two windows on the front. I mean, a lot of the design commitments are not getting us to what we're asking, what we're hearing that y'all are asking for, or what we're hearing the elected officials ask for. So by removing the Design Commitment section, that would allow applicants to proffer specific design commitments that are unique to the project itself. We're also looking to revise the required elements of a graphic development plan to capture what is most beneficial to, for transparency to community members and elected officials. Again, we run into the situation where there's an existing conditions page, and there's a proposed conditions page, and it's very confusing for community members. We can tell you, because we work with them all day, every day, that it's hard to tell the difference in what's being committed. So right now, you can see what's allowed under a textual development plan: just use limitations. As we heard in kind of the last two cases, that's how it's being used. What we're looking to allow on textual development plans or text-only development plans are additional things, such as sustainability measures, storm water control measures, distinctive architectural features, additional buffer width, landscaping features, building specifications, limitations on mass grading, affordable housing, financial proffers, transit improvements, erosion and sediment control measures, and public art features. And then another item of note for this is that textual and graphic development plans, if this were to move forward and be adopted in the future, would have the same level of legal enforcement. Sometimes there's been a narrative in the past that text-only development plans don't have the same level of enforcement or legal mechanism. It's just like a zoning district with some conditions tied to it, just like a graphic development plan. And so what staff is asking for tonight is for you to, of course, take a formal vote, but also provide any guidance or feedback that you have on this, questions that you have, and things that you would like to see different in it. Thank you so much, staff. And staff are available to answer any questions.
Thank you. At this time, we're opening up the public hearing, and I believe we have one person that has signed up to speak on this, and that is Mr. Tom Miller.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and members of the Commission. It's good to see you all. And you have to sign up for or against. I'm not sure yet whether I'm for or against. There's a lot in this I like. I was a big proponent of text-only commitment plans when the idea came up, when I was serving on the Planning Commission. But I have some questions that I'd like to kind of address, and a concern that I'd like to express. So if I can, I'd like to address some questions, just to be sure. The text-only, right now, text-only is uses, limited to uses. And so if you wanted to have a text commitment concerning building design or building height or something like that, couldn't do it. This will expand that. If you can express it in words or text, then it's, then it can be done, and you can avoid the graphic approach to development plans. Is that right?
That is correct.
That's a big expansion. So a question that goes with that is, because I work on, with developers representing community organizations, to try to express in text additional commitments, and sometimes it's And so I can see there's going to be points where what's written, where people attempt to write things that describe what can go where on a site in text without reference to any map, and that's, it's not going to work very well. Who will decide the saying, this isn't good enough, you've got to give us some drawings? Who will decide that?
Absolutely, yes. So that discretion would be at the planning director if they're unable to, if they're unable to describe it in textual format, the planning director would direct them to that it has to be a graphic development plan.
All right, thanks. Would, here's, and following up on that, I could see a situation where to supplement a text commitment, so where we're going to divide a piece of property into a big section and a little section, you try to do that in text. You could do it with meets and bounds, I suppose. The other thing is, is you could use existing The other thing is, is you could use existing landmarks, like a stream on this side of the stream or on that side of the stream, or a roadway, something like that. Would it be permissible to supplement the text with a simple drawing that wouldn't be the full-blown graphic commitment?
That is something staff can definitely look into. That's a, that's a really good idea, maybe an exhibit of some sort that would be tied to it. That's something we have not considered, but definitely can.
I mean, because we do, I have certainly worked on text commitments or commitments in development plans where we've used actual building elevations to illustrate things. It's not something called for in the current ordinance, but it's clear enough, and we supplement the development plan with that, and it's good to go. And it seems to me that that's something that could really be useful here. So, good. Now, scope of commitments, this is a question I have. Right now, there are things that we can cover in commitments in a development plan, whether graphically or in text. Does that scope of those, what's allowed today, change, grow, or decrease with this change? Because I know that one of the last provisions that's in here is the change that's, I guess, embodied in, in Section D, this is on page 12 of the handout, is a listing. These are the things we can cover in commitments. What is your view on the scope of these commitments if this were adopted compared to what we're doing today? Is it the same scope? Is it enlarged? Is it decreased?
Yeah, that's a great question. It's primarily the same. We went back and looked at all development plan commitments that have been proffered since 2020. Almost all of these come from something that's been proffered and approved before. The only additional commitment would be the mass grading that we haven't, we just started getting commitments on those recently, so that's kind of a little bit of an expansion. Everything else is something that can already be captured and already is captured.
I would love to see this have a catch-all. I mean, because we expressed earlier on that if you can, if you can say it in words, I would like to have some sort of catch-all so that this doesn't wind up being interpreted as being less than we currently have. Because the development plan is how the community engages with the development community. And when we have successes in those meetings and negotiations, it's going to come out in a development plan. I want to make sure that the development plan continues to be that incredibly useful tool for intersection of these two groups that are sometimes adversarial, but through the development plan do not have to be. So I'd just throw that out there. The last thing I really want to throw out there is a concern. I sat up there, I work in the community as a neighborhood advocate, I was a real estate regulator my whole life. The value of the development plans that you get today, think about it, you get your packet, you open it up, you read the staff report, and then you go to the development plan. And you look at the maps, you look at the existing conditions, which sometimes have extremely useful information, like TOPA, where the streams are, where features on the ground are that may or may not be of interest to you. If we adopt this, and we have more and more text-only development plans, a lot of this other stuff goes away, and we lose a tool of communicating important information to you, the decision-maker, to the City Council and Board of County Commissioners, decision-makers, but to the general community too. And the staff is right. Development plans today can be confusing because we're not all attorneys working in land use, or I look at the talent that is arrayed along the dais here. We're, not everybody is like us in the room, but still, it is a great way to figure out what's going on with this program. And so if we dramatically decrease that information so that you have less information, because the graphic stuff goes away and is seen less, and if the public can't see it, I'm worried about that. And so the question I have is, is there a way to replace at least some of that information by using city-generated maps and diagrams and things like that to beef up the staff reports to replace that information so that we have a feel for what's really going on? Now, when I was a Planning Commission member, I drove out and I looked at every piece of property, and sometimes I was startled at what I saw. Steep slopes or connecting roads, I think of one that was out in the basin where the, where we didn't have a connection between two adjoining residential subdivisions. And even though there was a stub for the existing subdivision, there was no stub connecting it for the new one. It's like, why is that? Aren't we supposed to connect? Well, it's because it was a 20-foot drop. If I hadn't ridden out there and gone to the end of that stub and looked over the edge, I would never have known. So I ask, is there a way, then, if we take the graphic away, is there a way that we can replace some of it so that we don't lose a graphic appreciation of proposed developments? And so, and then the last thing I would like to ask you is, unless there is a hurry on this, I would like to see what a new graphic development plan looks like, a mock-up. Say, take the Cornwallis Road project you just looked at. What would a minimally satisfying development plan, graphic development plan, for that look like as opposed to what you have in your packet today? I would like to see that before we vote on it. And those are my comments, and I appreciate the opportunity to make them to you.
Thank you. Any?
Yeah, I can answer. Those are great insights and definitely, so the graphic mock-up, that's something that we actually have something scheduled for two weeks from now. Staff are going to load test one, see how that looks and how it plays out. You know, this is something we're doing in our spare time. The second part, too, what Mr. Miller said, is spot-on, and I would actually say this is one of the things that we're ahead of the curve on. We actually planned for this by redoing the staff report first, that captures all the information that you would have on a graphic development plan. We also started linking things so that there's live information that you get. So oftentimes, an existing conditions page is a static document. The stuff that's being linked in your new updated staff report is live, it's interactive, you can see anything that's changed. And so absolutely agree with Mr. Miller. I would say that's one of the few things that we've actually been ahead of the curve on, even with everything that's going on. But it's something that we can continue to refine and make better as we hear feedback from y'all during these cases.
Thank you. We have Mimi Kessler on Zoom.
Hi, this is Mimi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name's Mimi Kessler. I live at 1418 Woodland Drive. And as a resident of Durham and not an expert in all of this, I do find the maps to be very helpful. But I also believe that I want to support smaller developers who might want to build something on a lot as opposed to a huge development involving multiple acres. So I'm wondering if there is some way to define a scope related to somehow the one-offs can have a text-only with some diagrams that don't have to be done by an engineer. But for multiple lot projects, you know, maybe, you know, more than three lots, that maybe that should have more detailed drawings. I really do find it very helpful to see them, and, and then I would hate, I guess I feel like that the smaller developers should be able to draw something. They're just building an ADU, they could draw it and not have to incur the expense of the architects and so forth. So I feel like that there can be a balance between these things, and I'm wondering if that's been considered, trying to decide about the requirements for a small versus a large development. Thank you.
Response?
So that's great. Thank you, Mimi. Couple of, couple of things with that. So the first thing is, you know, graphic development plans are not required for most zoning districts. It's something that the applicant generally, outside of the PDR, though we know we see a lot of PDR, is what they're generally just doing of their own volition, is that graphic development plan. So it's kind of the first part to what, to Mimi saying. The second part is that there's absolutely, we've thought a lot about this, a lot of bit about that tension and concern about how do we center local people, small-scale developers, not, I mean, we have a lot of pre-submitting meetings that are not developers at all. It's just someone that owns a land, they want to do something. How do we meet them where they're at? So this was the compromise proposal in that. We did kind of look into other jurisdictions and whether there'd be an acreage threshold. You know, we know we have a lot of development coming into, being annexed into the city, and a lot of these projects are, you know, 50, 60, 100, 200 acres. So we did look at whether an acreage would be an appropriate kind of threshold or tiered system. We decided not to include that when we brought this to the Joint City-County Planning Committee. Their, their overall blessing was pretty clear. Their concern was around the building and parking envelope, which you really can only get from a graphic development plan. So I think this is a great point, maybe bring us up a good point, and it's something that we can keep looking at, not averse to a threshold for acreage or some other tiered system, but I think that would be at the discretion of y'all and your guidance.
All right, thank you. Commissioner comments and questions?
... that I've seen, and it's both from a regulatory perspective and a, and a kind of consultant or applicant perspective, is that they tend to define what doesn't happen around the perimeter, and with, with far less detail about what does happen in the future portions of the development that will be public, and that's a very long-winded way to say, how the future streets are designed, how the future spaces are experienced and perceived. And of course, I'm speaking about larger sites, not smaller sites. And I do think that's, the significance of which the, some type of consideration of threshold would come into play. But I guess, so that's a question about the comprehensive plan, and then, and then the concern is, is that there's certain language in here that I would say tends to reinforce that focus on what can't happen versus then what must happen. And I'll leave it on the item where there's a reference to including building setbacks versus any kind of suggestion of even having the option to include build two lines or other things of that nature that would speak more to the shaping of the public realm, which I think just conversationally has been part of what may be contemplated going forward. But I'm wondering about that gap between, is this just an intermittent fix? And I'll stop there.
Yeah, if you can speak a little bit more to this gap, I think I followed your line of reasoning, but I think that if you could just pull out what that gap is so we can address fully.
Sure. So the gap, well, there's kind of two gaps. The gap is a chronological one relative to the comprehensive planning process and the anticipation of a future UDO rewrite, which I've heard staff describe at some point looming on the horizon. And I think the director appropriately, and I welcome, was looking at that sooner rather than later. So that's one thing. The second gap, unrelated, is more of a planning and design kind of regulatory approach, essentially a gap between conventional suburban land, a conventional land use zoning approach versus more of a form-based code approach that has often been used in a lot of locales, whether that phrase is used or not, that says things like, "This is how the street will be spaced." And there are vestiges of this in our design districts. But those are the types of things that I think would allow the city, the elected officials, the general public to, to see in action and develop over time much more confidence in the development plans that are being considered and in developments as they are built out.
Great. Thank you for referring me. That was really helpful. So in relation to the comprehensive plan, staff feels this falls in line with that work. You know, the comprehensive plan, community goals and objectives were adopted by both the City Council and Board of County Commissioners in June of 2021. This aligns with that work in terms of intentional planning and decision-making, trying to find better ways to work with the community and portray things to the community. In terms of when the comprehensive plan policies and like place-type map are actually adopted, I don't personally see a lot of intersection between this. I think this is something that aligns concurrently with that. I don't see a lot of change in that. Now, a UDO rewrite absolutely would, would impact this, and I'm sure it would get even better, hopefully, in a rewrite. So that's our first response. The second part, the regulatory environment. If there are additional things that you think need to be captured within this that we can do versus what you can't, we'd absolutely love that feedback. I will say with UDO text amendments, we're working under, you know, a very strict regulatory environment, under the state statutes and under the Durham Charter authority. And so we try to be very careful in what we require versus what we don't require. With that said, that's why it's framed the way it is versus what a great, you know, the things that we all say we want, and trying to operationalize that is what this is. Thank you.
Any other commission comments? No? Yes, Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if, if we could have a little bit more time to look this over and think about it. Is, I mean, is there, is there any reason that we shouldn't do that, or is there a rush or anything like that?
No, we've got plenty to do.
Okay.
Is that your motion?
Well, I just wanted to check with staff to see if there was any particular reason that this should be approved tonight. Like, are they working on other things that, you know, we should rush this forward for? But it sounds like there's not, so maybe we can, would there, is there a good timeline for bringing this back to us?
So to, yes, great questions. I appreciate this. So we are also working on the Planning Commission-initiated Connectivity and Walkability Amendment, which we want to get to y'all. We also are working on the mass grading text amendment that we want to get to y'all. And we're also, obviously, the SCAD amendment that the subcommittee's been working on takes some staff time and lift as well. So we do have some other commitments. So a 30-day would probably be most appropriate, if that gives y'all enough time to review it and provide additional feedback, especially between now and then. You know, staff want to keep that line of communication open.
Okay. So maybe we could, we could do that with the aim of, we won't, has spent a lot of time on discussion between now and 30 days. If there are commissioners that have additional comments, they can send them to you, and you all can incorporate as necessary or as possible.
Absolutely.
Do you think that works? Does that work for, for folks?
Yes, we have one more question before you.
Okay.
I was just going to say I was inclined to go along with what Commissioner Baker had to say regarding that. I was hoping that he was going to present that as a motion.
Yeah, because we, of course, we have SCAD next month. I think that's going to take up a lot of, you know, conversation. So, yeah, if we could aim to pretty much not talk about it next month and just vote on it. But, but if folks did want to provide additional comments. And also, you mentioned that you were going, that you were like creating another, there was another work product that was going to be attached with this. Is that?
We are going to do some load testing and see, essentially to what Mr. Miller requested, a mock-up so we can provide that as a, an exhibit or an example for y'all.
Okay, cool. Awesome. So then we'll be able to see that before we vote on it.
Yes.
Awesome. All right, so that's my motion. Move to, move to delay this item for, for 30 days.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Baker and seconded by Commissioner Valentine. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Madam Chair Cameron?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Shigares?
Yes.
Commissioner Cutwright?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner McIver?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sees?
Yes.
Commissioner Valentine?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmen Williams?
Yes.
And Commissioner Zuri Williams?
Yes.
Okay. So we're going to continue this to our regular meeting in December. And I had requested, I don't know if we have anything else to come before the commission. I think some of you may have missed a break. I requested if when, once the meeting is adjourned, if y'all would be so kind to come down front and let me take a group photo of you. The clerk's offices like to have a group photo of the boards and commissions. You can stand in the back or duck or something. If you take off running, I'm not going to tackle you, so you can, if, you know, whatever. But yeah.
Also, before we adjourn, I'd just like to have Commissioner Valentine introduce himself very briefly.
Yes, my name is Steve Valentine. I'm a resident of North Durham, and I count it a privilege to be amongst you, and I look forward to the work ahead.
Thank you.
One last thing, Chair?
Yes.
Can we get a big happy birthday for Chair Cameron tonight? Happy birthday!
Do you need a motion?
Happy birthday! And thank you for filling in.
Huh? Gracias.
Yeah, so just for your birthday, you can, you can adjourn and hammer the gavel.
Oh, awesome.
Oh, what, do you?
We have one more announcement, I'm sorry.
All right.
You better hurry up.
It'll be quick. We also wanted to, we want to keep you updated of everything that's going on. We have a new staff, a fourth staff member. We've never had four with the growth management team, starting December 5th. He'll be a principal planner of affordable housing, and their whole role will be to work with community development on affordable housing initiatives and make them operationalized within the planning department. So it's an internal hire from another department that will be joining us, so they'll be able to hit the ground running. Just want to give you an update on that.
All right. Is there any other? Yes.
Excused absences for?
We already did those.
Did we do it?
Yes, in the beginning.
We raised our hands, that's right.
Any other business to come before this body? If not, we adjourn.